Okay, let us read the proclamation here. Whereas Iowa's small businesses are the foundation of our free enterprise system, representing opportunity, independence, and the fulfillment of entrepreneurial dreams of generations of Iowans, and whereas it is our pride and privilege to acknowledge their achievements and contributions. Small business plays a pivotal role in shaping the future of Iowa and the nation by serving as the foundation and engine of growth for a healthy and prosperous economy. And whereas the 28 million small businesses in the United States, including the more than 263,000 small businesses in Iowa, create two-thirds of all new jobs, lead in innovation, and are the model of private initiative. And whereas the business owners of the state of Iowa and throughout the nation have taken a lead role in economic and civic affairs and will continue to play an important role in the future of our state and our nation with unparalleled accomplishments and contributions. Thus, this business people richly deserve our support and thanks. Now, therefore, I am Frank County in his absence, Bob Mahaffey, Mayor of the City of Des Moines, to hereby proclaim the week of May 12th to the 16th, 2014, as Small Business Week. I urge all citizens to join me in saluting our city's business people by observing this week and appropriate ceremonies and activities. In witness thereof, Frank County here under sets his hand and causes a seal of the City of Des Moines, Iowa to be affixed this fifth day of May, 2014. And I want to thank you for being here and congratulate you on another great year. I'm sure I saw some of your statistics. And it's been a few years, but I did have a family that served on this floor at one point, and I'm sorry, I was there at that time, and Jan, I know that too. So, yeah, so here's the proclamation, and please just say a few words.
Thank you, Bob. My name's Terry Borbrick. I'm with the City's Office Economic Development and have the honor to work also with some of the volunteers we have up here with the Corporation for Economic Development in Des Moines. We also have with us Joe Folsom, who is the Iowa District Director for the U.S. Small Business Administration. They're the federal agency that actually sponsors and recognizes the Small Business Week. We also have Kathy Koenig and Ted, and Ted the Economist, and Jan Owens-Breeney with the Corporation Economic Development, and Jan is also a staff person with the Small Business Development Center here in Des Moines. All of these organizations provide different services to assist the small business growth, which is one of the main backbones and drivers for economic development within the City of Des Moines and the state of Iowa. So, Joe, do you'd like to give that to you?
Sure. Thank you, Terry. As Bob said in the proclamation, May 12th to the 16th is National Small Business Week. We are celebrating across the country. We're kicking off on the West Coast on Monday, the 12th, with a series of events over there, transitioning to a day's worth of activities in Kansas City. You should feel free to go down and join those. Coming in, in a celebration in Washington, DC on Thursday and Friday. Mary Connell with Air Control out of Clinton is our National Small Business Person of the Year for Iowa. She'll be representing our state in Washington, DC, the latter part of that week. We're wishing her greatest of success in the competition with the other winners from across the country. Here in Iowa, with the Corporation for Economic Development kicks off Monday with its annual meeting here. Entrepess, which is a great celebration of entrepreneurship, is going to be taking place during the middle of that week in Iowa City. So, we do have a number of great events in this state recognizing entrepreneurship and small businesses. And I want to thank you for all of the recognition here and the collaboration and part of Terry and his team in the city and the Corporation for Economic Development, serving the small businesses in community.
Before we get a picture here, I just want to thank them for all their efforts because, as we spoke, you know, small business really is the heart of our business and supplying jobs and that for people. So, and like they said, their anniversary celebration is next Monday, I believe, week from today. It kicks off Monday. So, we'll wish them the best, and they do a great job in helping supply funding and that for some of our small businesses. So, thank them for all their efforts. We'll get a picture here. (applause)
I want to welcome everybody to the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting for May 5th. I would like the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2 is approving the Municipal Housing Agency submittal for a Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinator Grant Application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD Board Communication Number 14-215. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this application? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion by the board? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Let it be noted.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes. Could we have a motion adjourned, please?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We should adjourn. Prior to the starting of our city council meeting, which will start in a few minutes, we're going to have a message from our own member, Ward Councilperson Bill Gray. And we'd ask those of you who participate with us that you would stand at this time.
As most of you know, I'm very new at this, so I have to pick a book to read these out. This comes from Theodore Roosevelt. Perhaps there is no more important component of character than steadfast resolution. The boy who is going to make a great man or is going to count in any way in afterlife must make up his mind not merely to overcome 1,000 obstacles, but to win in spite of 1,000 repulses and defeats. That's what we're going to do here today.[1042.00][1042.00](laughter)
Thank you.
On that note, I would ask clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Coleman is absent temporarily.
Mr. Coleman, are you here?
We have a quorum.
All right. Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Okay, thank you.
It's been moved. Would you like to have any?
(inaudible).
Okay, thank you, sir. So, we, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. These are items 3 through 34. We'll enact those as one item on a roll call vote without separate discussion unless somebody pulls one off for further discussion or clarification. Tonight, item 4B, Councilmember Coleman votes no. Item 4M, Councilmember Gray has a conflict of interest. Item 5, Councilmembers County and Moore vote no. And item 20, items 24 and 29, Councilmember Gatto wishes to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who has an additional item? We see a gentleman standing in the rear.
(inaudible) regarding the (inaudible).
Yep. Item 30. Any others?
(inaudible).
You'd like to have 10?
Yeah.
Is that 10 separate ones or just item 10?
(laughing).
11 altogether?
(inaudible).
Okay. We're going to poll 10 also. Okay, so we are going to poll items 10, 24, 29, and 30.
I'll move the balance.
Have a motion to move the balance. You would all vote, please. You're welcome.
Seven yes.
All right. That takes us to item 10. Item 10 is a public improvement and it's communication from the contractors requesting permission to sublet certain items of public improvement projects. Mr. Moore?
My concern is with Lamberty Concrete. It didn't indicate in my packet as to what it was they were going to sublet. Now, we've got the information. They want to sublet general labor. Either two or four weeks ago, we had them in front of us wanting to sublet labor. Is this the same? Are they changing companies they're subletting to?
Jeb Brewer, could you please answer that question?
Mayor, members of council. Councilman Moore, I couldn't hear you. I don't know if the mics are on, but you had a question about item 10?
Yeah, it's Lamberty Concrete wanting to sublet, and it shows that the information I got today is they want to sublet their general labor to Narian Construction, but they were in front of us two or four weeks ago wanting some let labor. Is this switching to different companies to sublet to?
They had, you're correct, I think it was like two council meetings ago, they had asked for additional subcontract, and this is an additional subcontractor. There is a limit to how much they can subcontract out under the specs since they have to at least do 30%. They're essentially at that limit now on what they could subcontract out. So, at this point, they are subcontracting out as about the maximum amount as they can.
Okay, thank you. I'll move 10.
Seven yes?
All right. Takes us to item 24. Item 24 is approving a preliminary terms of agreement with Heart of America Group for development of a hotel at East Fourth Street and East Grand Avenue, Council Communication Number 14-213. Mr. Gatto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, and I seen Mr. Whalen come in, and I'll probably have him come up and just talk a little bit about the project. Met with Mr. Whalen. I tell you, first time I met him, I hit it off well, being two restaurant guys, and, you know, we got to know each other, and we talked, and I'm just very excited about this new Marriott concept hotel that we're going to put down in the East Village. And, you know, how he describes it, it's, and I'll let him come up and talk a little bit about it, the new hip concept that'll go very, very well at East Village, and very excited about it. Why don't you come on up, Mike, and just talk a little bit about it? I had, I had a big spill, but I see you have the picture, and you can probably tell a little bit better about it than I can.
(inaudible) a thousand words, so here we go.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll add to the thousand, yeah?
Let's put it on, we got a camera in the sky.
Oh.
Sky cam.
Oh, neat. Well, thank you very much. This is pretty exciting for us because when Marriott announced that they were bringing this European concept to the United States, they said originally that the idea was to have gateway cities, Manhattan, LA, Chicago. And shortly after they announced it, I called the folks in Chicago, and I said, hey, I've got a gateway city called Des Moines. And they said, really? And they said, I said, the kind of places you described that it should go, there's a perfect place called the East Village, and you got to come see it. And so, they toured, came and met with the city staff and toured the area, and their reaction unanimously was, this is exactly where this type of hotel is supposed to go. The place where there's the restaurants and the independent places to go, and the kind of the vibrancy, as he said, the hip urban area in East Village is, fits that bill 100%. So, we're excited. I think it can help with the mature matrization of the East Village and providing a key amenity that's not there right now. So, as he said, we, they're very excited when we showed the initial prototype design. It went viral around the Marriott chain saying that, no, this is not Manhattan, this is not LA, this is Des Moines. And so, we're pretty excited about bringing one of the very first ones of this concept to the United States.
Well, Mike, just for me, I'm really glad to see you here tonight and moving this project forward. As Joe said, I think it's an exciting addition to the East Village, but most importantly, I know that you have an important interest in our area and in the city of Des Moines, and I think that you're absolutely right. The East Village is the perfect place for this project, and we look forward to seeing it come out of the ground.
Well, we hope it won't be our last project in the East Village. By the way, I should say, it will feature a unique rooftop bar. Oh, I forgot, yeah, it's not.
Yes.[1521.21][1521.21](laughing).
And it'll have a nice rooftop bar up here so that you can avail yourself of the beautiful vistas of the downtown Des Moines. So, it's going to be a unique asset to the area.
Christine?
You know, I just want to echo the comments that are made. I know that we've been working with you and Heart of America for a number of years to get you located downtown, and I'm thrilled to death it's in East Village, even though it's not my ward, I'll, um...
You got to share. Visit anytime.[1553.14][1553.14](laughing).
No, I know how hard we worked to get something over on Court Avenue, and I think this is well worth the wait, and will just be really a great addition to the East Village. So, I'm excited about seeing it go forward.
Well, thank you very much.
Right. Mr. Coleman?
Just two quick thoughts. You know of my admiration for your company and both in the Quad Cities and around the Midwest. I'm really excited. Two things. The fact that there's not a full-service hotel with a restaurant and all that is really good news for the East Village, so that people that come are out and encouraged to go use the resources and restaurants and bars, obviously have a bar inside here. But I think that's really good news that we're not dealing with a hotel concept that's trying to capture all the money that people bring to town, but spread it around the neighborhood. The other thing that I'll mention is, I represent you all on the CVB board. One of the, one of the things that we know is that there is not a product like this in the metro area. You know, at one time, the Marriott was a Four Diamond Hotel, and at one time, we had the suites at 800 that were, that were kind of the place to go when you came in town if you were an entertainer and performing at the Civic Center or Iowa Event Center. This is going to be the kind of place people want to go, and it's really important that we have this if we're going to attract high-quality entertainers, visitors, conventions, and other things. So, I couldn't be more excited. I agree, and as Christine said, sometimes patience pays off. I know you've had your eye on other places and other ideas, but this is going to be fantastic.
Well, sometimes things don't happen for the right reason, and I think this is the right project in the right place. As you said, the whole idea of the AC is avail yourself of the amenities of the neighborhood, have the people leave the hotel and go eat in the restaurants and shop in the shops. And I think it'll be a great addition.
Yeah. One quick thing, and I thought it was very positive, and it's something that just came to my attention since I came to the council, and you said it when we met, we got to do something with the alley. And, you know, that was, that's a priority of his, and, you know, I, you know, we want to make sure that we have a safe, safe, the appearance is good of the alleys and pedestrian-friendly in the East Village. So, I was happy to hear that you said that, and we'll go to work on that.
Absolutely.
Mike, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll move. Item 24.
You want to speak on this? Come forward, please.
Mayor, members of council, Todd Von Steen, 5095, in East Village. I'm an 11-year resident, business owner, and a member of HEV. And while I'm excited about the project, I think the design needs a lot of work, and would like to almost see a continuance to make sure that the terms of the agreements that we're getting into really fit our design guidelines in, in East Village in the C3B zone. The city came to us with...
Hey, Todd, this is going to go to Urban Design Review and also to P&amp;Z and come back here for review exactly that, but so, give us your points, and we'll refer those on to those groups.
Okay, I'll make (inaudible). And so, we just want to make sure that we're sticking to the integrity of East Village, which the market districts, which is the root of the market district. So, I don't want to start changing the integrity of East Village and affect East Village and affect the market district. The city came to us with this, not this. So, I just want to make sure we're really careful about these design guidelines. I'm excited about the project. I just want to make sure that... I just want to make sure that we're here, that we are actually heard about the design guidelines. All right?
And I think there was a quick change on that picture that, that Mike, when we talked, we flipped that around, so the glass is on the other side. But this is a very preliminary, that's, that's what we're, we're voting on tonight. But I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. All right.
Seven, yes?
All right. This is item 29, which is amendment to the donation agreement with Variety, the Children's Charity of Iowa, for a donation of park shelter in sidewalks to be added to the Ashley Oakland Star Playground at Ewing Park, 5300 Indianola Avenue. Council Communication number 14-201. Mr. Gatto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, just, you know, today we had the groundbreaking at, at this project, and it was just not, I mean, we had probably 60 people there. Kudos to Ben Page in getting this put at the perfect park for it. I mean, there's a lot of room, and it's just, it's, it's a wonderful project, and I can't wait to see the finished project. You know, they've got it started, and, and it's going to be a great thing. And it's amazing how quick that they raised a half a million dollars for this project. And it just, that, that really amazed me. So I just wanted to, you know, touch on that a little bit, and I'll move 29 if there's not any other comments.
It's going to be a great park. Yes.
Seven, yes?
Item 30. Someone from the public is asked to pull that item. It's a donation construction agreement with the Rotary Club of Des Moines AM Foundation regarding a new playground plan north of the Iowa Women of Achievement Bridge in designating and naming Rotary River View Park. Council Communication number 14-211. And A under that is a private construction contract with Graham Construction Company and Rotary Club of Des Moines AM Foundation for Rotary Park Improvements in Lot 5, River Hill, Platteau, $440,000.
Mr. Mayor and city council persons, my name is John Bauslog. I'm a lawyer here in Des Moines. My office is in the Equable Building. I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Des Moines AM. This is a special day for Des Moines regarding parks, as you just approved and, and know about, the groundbreaking for the Ashley Oakland Park this morning. We're here to ask your final approval on a contract to build yet another park. And, and the design of it is there for your viewing. You've seen it before, because, heck, this is our third time back. But this will be known as the Rotary River Walk Park. It will be built just north of the Women of Achievement Bridge on, on the west side of the river. And what you're looking at is a 65-foot-long fishing pole that will arch toward the river with a 12-foot-wide bobber for kids to, to play upon. And you'll see all these swings coming down here. Those are the swings for the children, as well as one handicap-accessible swing. And the blue, it's not coming up very well in that vision, but it's a.
We see it pretty good, I think.
Yeah.
Straight on.
It's a soft playground surface, the softest and most safe playground surface available in, in America with regard to keeping injuries to a minimum for children who play on playgrounds. But anyway, we're here to ask your final approval. We've been at this for a number of years and worked closely with Ben Page and his staff at the Parks and Recs Department. And so we're here to ask for your final approval with regard to this. We also, assuming you do approve it, plan to have a ground, excuse me, a ribbon, groundbreaking on the 15th of the month at 10 o'clock in the morning. And we would invite you all to come to that. And then we hope to have a ground, excuse me, the ribbon cutting in the fall, sometime around Labor Day.
So it's next Thursday?
Next Thursday, a week from Thursday. Yes, sir.
Next Thursday is becoming a busy day.
Busy day. Busy day. Any questions? Christine?
You know, John, I just want to thank you and Rotary for taking the lead on this and, and bringing this over the finish line. And I think it's just a great project. But just to underscore what's happened today, we've got a million dollars' worth of private funds that are coming in and are being invested in our parks in the city of Des Moines. So we would like to hire you guys to go out and raise more money. The rest of the needs in the park, but.
We, we got to, we got to define hire. I think we want to have you donate.
Volunteer, volunteer.
Ben was giving me a wish list. We're sitting back in the back row with him.
Well, just a great job, and I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the, the River Walk. And one of the questions I had was just for clarification that I'll share with everybody, this will be taken care of in our agreements, the maintenance and upkeep of the park.
Yes.
With our agreement that we have with DCA and the River, Riverfront Development Group. So it's all part of that.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
And I can't, we, our club can't take all the credit. Our club worked on this for a number of years and reached out to eight other clubs. So we have a total of nine Central Iowa Rotary Clubs that are participating in this. That's how we were able to raise the $500,000. And it's all private funds, and we're happy and proud to be participating in this and make the contribution.
Mr. Moore?
You know, John, I think if memory serves me correct, Downtown Rotary bought the trees for the Western Gateway Park initially.
I believe so.
And that was a $60,000 tab. I was one of the three people that paid to go on the road, and we went from Minneapolis all the way to Chicago, and it, it took probably 10 or 15 nurseries to find the trees so they were specimens. So you've got a history of doing this, and, and I greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome, and we're proud to do it.
So I'll move item 30. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Chicago has the bean, and we have the bobber. Is that right? We got to go.
You bet.
Seven, yes?
All right. That completes the consent agenda, and that moves us on to ordinance's first consideration. Item 35 amending Chapter 114 municipal code submitting traffic regulation changes as follows. A is an installation of parking meters on both sides of Mulberry Street, west of Ninth. B, removal of handicap parking meter south side of Grand Avenue between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. C is an additional handicap parking meter on the north side of Locust Street between 10th Street and 11th Street. D is boundary changes to parking meter District 3. And E is revisions to the municipal code to agree with current signing conditions in the Court Avenue Entertainment District. Is there anybody here to speak to these amendments to Chapter 114?
If not, I'll move item 35A through.
E.
And also the non-prepublished, based on the non-prepublish, so that we can weigh the second and third readings.
Seven, yes?
Item 36 amending Chapter 10 of the municipal code regarding conditions and regulations for a liquor license or wine or beer permit at city parks and golf courses. Council Communication number 14-216A. Final consideration, the ordinance above the waivers requested by the Parks and Recreation Director and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak to this amendment to the municipal code regarding conditions and regulations? Seeing none?
I'll move 36, 36A.
Seven, yes?
Item 37. These are council requests from Councilmember Skip Moore to speak regarding zoning in the market district. Mr. Moore?
After we approved Scotty's Body Shop, which I'm not opposed to, I think there's going to be a fine tenant down there, it was brought to my attention that we had agreed that the market district would be zoned C3B. And that area will be zoned now M1. I've got some great concern about that when we agreed with the people in HEB and the market district that we would attempt to see to it everything is C3B down there. I would like to ask staff to do an inventory of any vacant city properties that are down there and bring them back to us for consideration to ensure they're C3B if they're not already C3B.
Okay. It's sort of a receive and refer back?
Yes.
One, one question. Don't we have more control of what businesses come in if we, if we're able to zone it as the businesses come in? Because if that was zoned C3B, then we wouldn't have had somebody like Scotty's Body Shop come in and, you know, be able to treat it with the landscaping and things like that. That's the only thing that I see with, you know, blanketing one certain area. And then if, you know, some of the city buildings, I mean, if, if, if we need to do something to our own buildings, I mean, and they're, they don't meet up to code, then all of a sudden, are we going to the Board of Adjustments to, to do, you know? I mean, that's, that's all of our.
What I asked for was vacant city property.
Okay.
Not ones with buildings.
Gotcha.
I'm well aware that if one of them is more than 50 percent destroyed, then we would have to move out if they were.
Right.
C3B. I just want an inventory of what our properties are down there so that we know what we've got, and hopefully this won't happen again.
Mayor and council will certainly do that inventory, figure out what those properties are, map them, and give you a report on the advisability of rezoning. Zoning issues are always interesting. When do you trigger it for, you know, the full rezoning?
Right.
Or I understand what you're doing, looking at those properties that might be redeveloped. Because the purpose of getting the zoning to match the plan is to move forward to where your vision is. But there are some, some tricks in how that takes place, so we'll look at that issue, too. Be glad to. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I hope that you will follow up just sort of directly on, on your, your last comment. When we have a vision for an area, here's one that we've got, $100 million new road that we are putting in in the process of extending all the way out with a few hundred more all the way out to 65, 69, and 5, and connecting to downtown, known as the Southeast Connector. And I think that we really need to, to have an understanding where the zoning is consistent with that vision for that whole area from the river all the way over to the Capitol and all the way down to the, the river on the south, the river on the east and the river on the south, and, and, you know, is it consistent? Seems that, that most of our vision has been for commercial, residential, retail, and I think we have to be real careful how we do it, and, and, you know, what, what kind of timing are we talking about if, if there's something that, that somehow infringes on that walkability concept that we always have dreamed about for that whole area?
Your, your comments are well, well-placed, and we'll look at those issues. You know, if it was a vacant area and just rezoning, it's real easy. It becomes a little more problematic with the uses that are there and how you affect them with becoming non-conformities, as well as pushing that vision and making sure we're positioning ourselves so that it does become the area that we think it's, well, is transforming into with the, the investments made in the Southeast Connector. So we'll do just that.
Okay.
Bob?
Item 37I from Councilmember Skip Moore to discuss compensation for the automobiles stored at Waveland Golf Course. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Back in, I don't know if it was January or February, I started getting calls about new cars being stored at Waveland Golf Course. And I drove out and took a look at it, and sure enough, there are a bunch of new cars stored out there. I called the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Page, and he was already aware of it. He advised me that, number one, it's not zoned for automobile storage, and, number two, the contract does not allow that type of activities to go on there, and that in order for them to happen, that the contractor, Ned Shido, needed to make a request in writing of the Parks and Rec Director, which he failed to do. He said that he and the manager were going to file this up. Well, last week, I called Ben and asked him what kind of compensation we got out, and I don't think there'd be much, but what he was advised was is that Ned didn't charge the automobile dealer for storing cars there. And I think that's a very nonchalant answer. I need to know what we're going to do to ensure that this is not going to happen again in the future in any manner. That's the Citizens Golf Course, and I've gotten a look at the contract, and the golf, the, the contract is very specific as to what can happen out there, and if you want something else, how it's going to happen.
So you would like to do what with this?
Well, I, I need, I, we need some kind of an assurance. We.
An assurance from the contractor? To the manager's office to give us some?
I'd like to refer it back to both legal and the manager's office for report at the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
You know, I, I saw this on the council agenda. It was added at the last minute today, and so I've done some checking myself. And I think it's important that, there's always two sides to every story. Ever since I've been in elective office, I've learned quickly that you need to talk with all the parties involved, which I have done. And I think that as I've, you know, it's about interpretation, but I think that the agreement does, is rather vague as it deals with this. Number one, there was no compensation from, that Ned Shido received on this. Number two, Stew Hansen is one of the largest sponsors for the city golf tournaments and provides significant dollars to the city to help underwrite the costs and really expand the golf tournaments that we have within the city. So I think as it's looked at and reviewed by city's manager's office and legal, we need to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, are we going to be so prohibitive that they have to get agreement from Parks and Rec and city staff if they're going to rent out the banquet room? I mean, you know, he's got discretion in there, and I think that if you look at it, it is somewhat vague as to whether or not he had the ability to do that. So I think it's important that we have all of the facts, and what's the real reason behind what, why we're looking at this before we make any final recommendations to come back.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Real quick, I just received the report, I think it was last week that we all received the report about the golf courses and how profitable they've been since Mr. Shido has taken them over. And where Blank was, and where Waveland was, and where Grandview was, before, you know, Mr. Shido's had Blank, then he, then he, then he took over Waveland and Grandview, and significantly has changed the dynamics of our golf courts from the appearance to the money that it brings into the city, to the amount of dollars that it doesn't cost the city. And, you know, to be a good neighbor, which I want the businesses that, that we're involved with as a city to be a good neighbor to other businesses, that's how we promote business in the city of Des Moines. That's why, you know, when we bring things like this in front of the council, you know, the, the problem is, is we look like we're nitpicking, and nobody wants to do business with the city of Des Moines when we do things like this. So that, that's my, that's my take on the whole thing. There's always two sides to a story, and, you know, I, I've obviously did my research also, had the same input as, as Councilmember Hensley has, and, you know, I, I think that we really should take a good look at things like this before they're added to our agenda an hour and a half before we all sit down.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. I think the bottom line is, the golf course belongs to the citizens. We have a contract. The contract should be adhered to. This contract was not adhered to in this case.
And council, what we'll do, and with legal, look at the contract, look at the situation, figure out all the, the points, and give you a report back. And also, your question was, you know, how we, how we look at these issues in the future, have that well defined so we know what to expect.
I, I think we need to look at the contract, but it sounds like with the review that Christine did, that it's very vague as to what they, if they can do these things or not. But, you know, I, I want to give Ned a lot of credit for that. Grandview Golf Course is vastly improved from what it was when he took over, and the play out there is a result of what the improvements is that he's, he's put into it. So I think we ought to look at it very carefully.
Well, and we've gone from running, having, being, operating in the deficit with the golf courses to operating in the black in a significant manner. And there, there has got to be some individual discretion used by the entities that are running the courses. And the fact that he didn't take any money, but this was a large sponsor, I think speaks volumes.
We'll go ahead and detail the, the details and, and report back to you.
All right.
So there's going to be a recommendation that just comes back with the information?
There's just going to be a report, I hear.
There's going to be a report, and then, then we can look at if the contract needs some tightening or better definition. We'll, we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Six, yes, one, no.
All right. It is 501, and that will take us directly to item 41. We'll come back to the council communications and reports. Item 41, hearing item is on a request from Denise Cody to rezone property at 912 43rd Street from R160, one-family low-density residential to R2, two-family, to allow the property to be occupied as a two-family dwelling. The Plan and Zoning Commission recommends den. The Plan and Zoning Commission recommends denial, and the roll call contains an alternative number of motions. A is the denying request to amend the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Land Use Plan. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Item 41. Seeing none?
I'll move item 41, that upholds the Plan and Zoning Commission's recommendation to deny. Seven yes?
Item 42 is a request from ST Investments LLC to rezon property at 200 Southeast 6th Street from limited C-3B Central Business District Commercial to C-3 Central Business Mixed Use to allow a rental car display lot use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. I'll open this up for discussion. Anybody in the audience want to speak on this? Yep, whatever you want to speak to. Anybody else who would like to speak? We have another speaker back here. Two more, all right? Go ahead. Give us your name and address, sir.
Dane Wright, 1025 Woodland Drive, Carlisle, Iowa. I am the one who had purchased the property from ST Investments. Enterprise Rent-A-Car is being pushed out of this location that they're at now. It's kind of a limited timeframe of what we've got to do. Hanson wants them out by August 15, so that really puts us on a time deadline. That's one of the reasons we're wanting to waive the other readings. We presented everything to the Pioneer Zoning Commission with overwhelming approval. We've met with the downtown village people, and there was no resistance there. Also, we met with all the adjacent property owners, and everybody was overwhelmingly in favor of what we're trying to do down there. We're going to remodel an old building and turn it into something that's going to look nice, and downtown Des Moines still needs what they have to offer. They do a lot of business with the capital, a lot of business with the downtown businesses. So anybody have any questions from me on this?
Any questions for Mr. Wright? Joe, anything?
No, nothing.
All right. Skip, Bob?
Not this time.
Yes, sir.
Mike Kinter. I own the building at 118 Southeast 4th Street, block over from this project, and I wasn't aware that Mr. Wright was the developer here, but I'll apologize to him in advance because I'm opposed to this. We have a concept for that whole entire area. Does not call for rental car lots, or any car lots for that matter. It does not call for body shops. And we've got this, we should stick to it. So at the very least, I would ask that this be continued to the next council meeting so that more research can go into this. And as far as planning and zoning, approving it, I think they need to read what's already on the city website. And so with that, I'll let somebody else. I know there's other people here opposed to this, too. Unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kinter? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
Heck, are you a member of the HEV?
I was. I was a past member, and I'm not a member right now. And unfortunately, right now, we have nobody from the Market District represented on that board. And I've set out a year, so I will run for the election next time. I served on that board for over six years. And it's unfortunate, but the Market District is not being represented like it should be.
Oh, it's me again. Bob Eichelberry-Mongo. Heck, if ever, Council, please remember, back August 9, er, August 31 of 2000, the East Village submitted the Main Street project to the city. Okay? The Capital Gateway Project East Urban Design Plan, September 1997. I have both plans, and our city manager, Rick Clark, at the time, said, "In all these." The Market District of the East Village, May 2010, Jeffrey Morgan was the architect. In all of these, we outlaid no cars, no body shops, no tire shops, nothing to do with automobiles in that area, or in the East Village. We've also stated in that report where they want to build a hotel on East 5th, or dug in at 4th, that was to be a parking ramp. Now, has Steph and Council forgot all of the money that us taxpayers put into this, and all of the time and effort that was put into these programs to totally abandon them and switch directions? I hope not, folks. I'm looking for the betterment of the whole area, and body shops and so forth just don't fit. We are an entertainment slash cultural slash residential area. Jake Christensen, and I respect the man to death, and I've supported all these programs. He had a beautiful program down there. It was denied and put on the back burner until traffic and transportation gets out of there. Understandable, you don't want residents getting woke up 24 hours a day by trucks. There are great improvements down in that area, a body shop, a car thing, there's plenty of room east of East 14th. There's a lot of undeveloped land over there. So make very careful consideration. You know, we hire you folks to take our interest. Please use our interest. Thank you.
Bob?
Yes?
Are you a member of HEV? You need to go back over to the-
I just redid. Sorry. Now, I just reassigned. I was on the board for over nine years, and I had to go off because of time limitation. But yes, I am a member.
Did you attend the meeting when this was considered by the HEV board?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't the enterprise what we're talking about? It's right down here in part of the East Village that we're talking about.
Yeah.
It's in the East Village right now, correct?
Uh-huh. It's at the old block.
It's being relocated in the East Village, yeah.
Okay.
That's where it's at right now.
Yep.
Mayor, members of the council, Todd Vonstein, 509 East 5th, 11-year business owner resident of East Village. Can I get the camera on this to have it go back through this and, um, we did in 2010 an ordinance study that showed us where we were at in 2001. Kind of hard to see, sorry. So here's where we were at in 2001, because we were at 2002. This is from the City Zone Study. In this same study, we have the this and not this. The Enterprise Rent-A-Car does not fit the this, it fits the not this. Other page of this and not this, this and not this, which is where we're at with Enterprise Rent-A-Car. Page 10 has a really extremely key point, not this, and the not this is auto-oriented environment. So the C-3 brought us to the 2001, 2002 pictures, is where we were at with the C-3, and this is where we're headed with the C-3B. And by the way, Erin Olson-Duggal's did a great job with all this. She really is a blessing to our program down here. And so the rental car program doesn't really fit the planning that we've put into this for the last quite a few years. And one of the things that we try to, need to be real careful of is, and I'm going to continue to remind us that the Market District hinges on the identity of East Village. So as we change the identity of East Village, we threaten the identity of the Market District. And so in our Market District plan that was put together, the identity of East Village is the core guiding principle for the Market District. We've got to start being real careful with what we're doing here. The rental cars, the rental car concept just is a threat to the identity of East Village. We've gotten two body shops out that have moved out of the area. We've redeveloped one of those buildings into three successful retail spaces, and it's a historic, that building is put back to as close as what we can figure out, to its original splendor. So one body shop is put back into service, and the other body shop will be, and then we added a body shop. So we've done two things that are really starting to threaten and make us a little concerned about what's happening to the East Village and to the Market District. So I would encourage no less than a continuance on this, or no vote, because really, we're beginning to change the identity of East Village, and I think what we've put together over the last five years is something we really need to stay steadfast with. Any questions?
Any questions for Todd? Skip?
Are you a member of HEV?
Okay, let's make sure we're clear on members. HEV now has members, and they have board officials or board members. I was a board member, and I've been a member of HEV continuous for I don't know how many years. I think Mike is a member-
No, a member, not a board member.
Right, he's a member of HEV, not a board member. So when you ask if they're a member, there's two different types of memberships. You're a board member, or you're a member, and you could be a residential member, business member, whatever. So I technically have two memberships, so I can only have one voice, but-
The reason I'm asking is, we've got a letter here from the HEV that they approve of this rezoning and enterprise going in there.
Right, so that's the reason for my request to beg for a continuance, is so that we can get back to in front of the HEV board to see what's going on. And why is it we can't leave all the work that we've done in their hands? Because obviously, we've got a problem. So at least, if we can get a continuance, we can get back in front of the board to show them and remind the new board members, this is what the work that we've done in the past, and we need to bring them up to speed of where we're at. And no less, a no vote, that'll still give us more time, and then we can sit back and take some quality time with the board to talk about what we've done to the East Village, where we're headed at Fort East Village.
I was at the HEV meeting when they talked about Scotty's. Everybody was for it, there was no problems. The letter we received from Enterprise, no problems with that. You know, I visited with pretty much everybody that was there. You know, it's in the East Village now. We are moving it further south. There's a need for that type of service in this area, and I think the project that we're going to put there will help the East Village. I think it's Hanson, the project that they showed me was great. They're on a time schedule, as we talked about. And so, I mean, I think that, you know, I think we should move forward with this. We've talked to the neighborhoods, we, you know, they did their homework, we did what we need to do, and, you know, I just think that, I appreciate your comments, but I think we should move forward in this regard.
Mr. Kinter and myself and Mr. Parrott were the steering committee for the HEV Action Plan and helping put this Market District together, because it came out as the Lower East Village, and we're the ones that put this Market District, kind of fine-tuned it, and this is absolutely against everything we've done, and I have to, as much as I respect everybody on the commission, this has to be stopped. The body shop should have been stopped, this should have been stopped, and we will start getting back to the board to say, "Why aren't you taking care of our interests?" So I follow the board agendas, the HEV board agendas. I haven't seen anything like this come across the agendas, so with three of the HEV members here, we've got three businesses and a resident here, there's a problem, and it needs to be at least continued.
What date was it that you put this project together? You and the others?
2009 and '10.
Nine and 10.
Well, eight, nine, 10.
Was Enterprise at the current location now, at that point in time? So it went in there, it was out of a whole lot of trouble.
Well, we hadn't adopted all of the zoning when they started.
Let me go back, because, number one, there's a letter of recommendation and support. You, the notices were sent out to all the impacted businesses. There were only three that were returned, but they were all favorable. They were in support of the project. Staff recommendation is to support the project. P&amp;Z recommendation is to support it overwhelmingly. It was a 10-0 vote. You know, and it sounds like the ball was dropped, if you feel that that's the case. I'm not sure I agree with that yet, but with you having input at the process when you should have had input, and now it's to the point where we also have a gentleman on the other side of the equation, that he's under a timeline, and I don't, he's gone through and done everything he's supposed to do, and I don't think it would be fair to create a problem for him.
No, I understand that.
Nobody's contacted me from-
Yep, I understand that.
From any of your group, and, you know, I'm very accessible, and I've been out there, and-
We're here tonight to talk about this, so I'm just asking for a continuance. Thank you, Councilman Hensley.
I'm gonna-
Anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move-
Anybody else? Mayor, could we have Dane come back up here?
Okay.
How bad would a two-week continuance hurt your project?
We're real tight now. We might not make our August 15 deadline is our issue. Enterprise has been, we've been putting them on hold for quite a while on this deal anyway. Yeah, it's just, it'll-
Yeah, when I spoke with Hanson, I mean, they were tight on their deadline, and that's the-
Yeah, and this is just, I mean, this is not a, just a used car lot.
No.
These are cars that are probably newer than, you know, current year or better. They're not, it's not a junkyard, it's not a body shop. The building now is just an old block building, and I don't know if you guys have had elevation drawings of it.
Oh, yes.
We're going to turn it into something. It's going to look much better than what's down there now. And in Enterprise, it might not be a permanent thing. It'll go with the market. Someday, just like what's happened to them here, the market will overvalue what the property is worth to them, and they'll have to move on. It's, it may, they might not be there for 10 years, you know, they might be there seven years. But again, I know how these guys feel about this, but this is a start to that area, and rental cars are needed in the downtown area. That's the reason they want to be down there. They don't want to be on the other side of 14th, because that's not where their market is, so.
About how many cars would you have at any one time in the lot?
We will have parking for 30. The goal is not to have many cars at all. That's-
Well, you want them out on lease, yeah.
But usually, if you look over there, there's probably 10 cars, then employees. Again, their goal is not to have many cars. They want parking for 30, just in case, so.
What we've had there for years, as I drive by every single day, this is a major improvement to what's there right now. I mean, this is something that, you know, I think from what's there right now to what we're going to have it with the new building, landscape, and looking very, very nice compared to what's there right now, and it's been there for many, many years, this is an upgrade.
My one issue is, again, if this would have been nipped in the rear a long time ago, I would have had time to switch gears and go someplace else.
Right.
This is the first time I've had anybody make a comment that they were not for it.
Me also.
Yeah, I look at this as just moving from one area to another within the same East Village, and, yeah.
All right. Mike, would you come up to the microphone? I, on the other hand, have received a number of calls from folks who participated in that planning project that has been referred to a number of times regarding the vision for the East Village, all the way down to that couple hundred million dollar highway we put in down there, and what was- put in down there, and what was supposed to happen. I understand that your position, Mr. Wright, in wanting to move forward, but it does seem like it's a little bit away from the plan that we've created and was put out there, including the zoning. We're having to change the zoning to accommodate a rental car lot. Could you kind of give us a sense of where the Planning and Zoning Commission went and how they got to a position that seems to be somewhat distant from the plan that was in place?
Mayor County, Members of the Council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. Back in 2009, we did a rezoning of the East Village area. It was after the completion of the market district plan, but it was specifically in the East Village core. That was previously Zone C3, which is just our central business district core. The height limits in that district really didn't match up with the East Village vision for height limits that we have, because of the Capitol View Protection, et cetera. So we proposed a large rezoning of the East Village from C3 to C3B, which is a mixed-use downtown commercial zoning district, had design standards at the time which the other districts did not have. At that time, there were a couple properties that were left, zoned, or agreed to a limited C3 zoning. Those two properties were the, obviously, the Enterprise Rent-A-Car or the Bud Mulcahy site, and the other one was the Simon Tire business. And we did a limited C3 zoning on those properties to allow them to continue to be used for auto repair, auto-oriented uses. With the new project that is being proposed on the Bud Mulcahy site, Enterprise is being asked to leave. Up till this point, we haven't had any complaints about that operation at that location. As a matter of fact, when it was out there, we heard with downtown residents, some don't want to own cars, some are looking for rental cars in a close proximity to the downtown, and so that was seen as a good interim use of the property, as long as they were complying with the site plan. They came to us with this proposal for this existing site. There was a project there proposed. Jake Christensen had proposed some multifamily residential on that property. It did not receive tax credits from the state. That's why the project did not get built, so the property was on the market again. They are proposing to utilize the existing building, which is a sustainability issue, which we're not sending more materials to landfill, it's an interim or rehabilitation of an existing building. The building is out at the corner of the street, and they're adding significant landscaping and fencing along the edge, architectural fencing along the edge of the lot. So I think they described it as an interim potential use. I think we saw it that way also. There would be a higher and better use that would come for this property at a later time, just as it has on the Bud Mulcahy site. And I think the Planning Commission, it was unanimous recommendation, it was staff recommendation for approval. The Historic East Village was in support, their board, we had a letter in support. There was no opposition present at the Plan and Zoning Commission hearing, and until tonight...
But this is the site that originally Jake was gonna put something on?
There was, there was.
And so, we thought that use wasn't quite ready?
We did not. The state did not approve tax credit projects.
He didn't get tax credit.
So we had approved, we had recommended zoning to allow that project to go forward, but they were not successful in obtaining tax credits for the project, and so it went back on the market again. And we had changed the zoning. Again, I would say that these conditions that are recommended on this rezoning are exactly the same conditions, basically, as what we put on Bud Mulcahy site and the Simon Tire site when we rezoned the East Village, and that was acceptable at the time to both the Historic East Village and neighbors at that point, to get that whole zoning through.
Okay.
Mike, before you leave, didn't we change some of the zoning for the recycling crank to go in there with a limited life of 10 years, I think it was, that they got zoning board approval, zoning board adjustment approval?
Yes, yes. There was a 10-year limit, I believe, on their...
That was not on the original plan for the East Village.
No.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Frank Joe?
I will, you know, listening to all the comments, I just think this is a major upgrade. I think is, just as this previous site, they came to, people came to it, and then, you know, they bought them out, I think is, we've got a lot of work to do in the market district before this is gonna be an eyesore to that. And I'm gonna move 42A and B.
All right.
A and B, Joe?
Yes.
Did you let the record show that I vote yes on 42A, no on B?
I'm gonna have the same procedure for me. Yes on A and not...
I can add mine too. I'm gonna vote the same way.
So A passes.
A passes.
42 and 42A pass. B will be considered at the next meeting.
All right, it moves forward. We're just gonna get a little more review.
Frank?
Yep.
You know, we had three of the people have been spearheading the East Village and the market district, and I think it's time that you start attending some HEV meetings and maybe shake it up a little bit if you want a different outcome.
Or talk to me. Give me a call. Let me know what's going on, let me know how you guys are feeling.
All right, let's move on to 43, and a request from Jerry Hoots, rezoned property at 2428 Southwest 9th Street, from C1 neighborhood retail commercial to C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to provide for an application of a conditional use permit and allow the retention of an existing liquor store. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant. Is anybody here to speak to this rezoning of the property on Southwest 9th?
My name's Rich Bartlett. I'm the owner of Southside Tobacco and Liquor that is located at 24, 24 Southwest 9th Street. It's in the Lincoln Plaza. My home residence is 3838 31st Street. Me and my family are lifelong residents of the city of Des Moines, and we've been at that location since 1996, as when we opened. In 1990, August of 99, we were granted a beer and wine license, and then in September of 2003, we moved across the parking lot to our current location, and were granted a full liquor license. And in that 15 years, we have never had a single violation. In that time, I've gone from being a single man with a girlfriend to a husband with a wife and three children. Two of my children are here today. Barry and Richie, my other son. TJ could not be here. He's currently playing soccer game for Lincoln High School right now. This is how me and my wife have built our life for the past almost 20 years. When we first went in, we tried selling food items, but we've got a discount grocery store right down the street, and you just can't compete with them, unfortunately. And the property I was in was empty for about two or three years before I moved in there. So we did fill a space, and the property I was previously at has been rented ever since I moved out. With respect to the school, our property line is where the separation issue comes into effect, consideration is, to the west of our building. It's in a wooded area, runs along the preface of a cliff, basically, about 20 feet long. There is no direct access to my store from school property. In fact, I do not believe you can even see my store from the school. I've talked with the resource officer at the high school there, and she's been in my store one time in 10 years. And she says that we don't have any problems in our direction. Most of the problems she has lie to the south of the school, not to the north. The economic impact this would have on my family is pretty big, because, you know, me and my wife, we're the only breadwinners, and we both work there. We don't have a bunch of stores in a bunch of different states. I don't have a rich uncle to fall back on. This would be definitely devastating to me and my family. Of course, I'd probably end up losing my investment. The landlord, Mr. Hoots, would be probably put into a negative balance cash flow if we were to go under, and so that would have a definite effect on the entire property. I do have a few petitions I'd like you to take a look at.
Are these the same petitions that you handed out at P&amp;Z?
Yes.
Okay.
We have copies of them.
We've got copies of them, yeah.
And first, I got a general petition, which is signed by about 350 people. Among a couple notables would be Joe, signed it, and Bill Hanson.
I knew what he was signing, but that may hurt you.
Sure hope not. And...
Tonight.
Phil Hanson, the president of the Southwest 9th Street Merchants Association. Could I have the overhead, please? Could I have the overhead? All right. We are located on Southwest 9th Street. The first petition is from residents of the Lincoln Plaza. There are four apartments and one business. All of the apartments except one signed, because they were non-English speaker. The next page would be Southwest 9th Street, between Bell and Kirkwood, and we have every resident there signing in our favor. The next one is from Southview Manor, which is a city building right here at 2417, located right across the street, and we have about, we have 30 of about 40 residents there signing. The ones who didn't sign were non-English speakers, are a little too disabled to come to the door. On Southwest 8th Street, we have every resident signing, except for two. One I was able to get a hold of, and the other one was the zoning department's owner, Sue Donovan, and she politely declined to sign my petition. Right, Sue? Okay. And then on Southwest 7th Street, we have three unoccupied buildings, and we have every resident, except for one I could not get a hold of, who signed our petition. On Bell Avenue, we have every resident except for three. One didn't speak English, one I was unable to get a hold of, and the other one's the one I'd like to tell you about. Her name is Mrs. Robbins, and I went to her door and knocked, and told her my situation, and she said, "Well, I'm sorry, my religious view is an alcoholic, I can't sign your petition." I said, "Well, really, it's not about alcohol, it's more about, do we have a negative impact on the quality of life in the neighborhood?" And she said, "No, no, I don't, I don't think you do, but I'm sorry, I still can't sign your petition." I walked away, she said, "But, but I will say a prayer for you." So I got that going for me.
All right, if you could sort of wind it up, you've...
Sure, sorry. Okay, then the last two, then we have Southside Cares, that's a charitable organization I work with. Whenever someone's sick in the neighborhood, we put a jar up and collect money for them. And then we have the business owners from Southwest 9th Street, about 20 businesses there, Cravaro Insurance, Scaffington's, pretty much write all the businesses around me that's signed and supported me. And so tonight, when you vote, he's taking into effect that I don't think I'm a blight in the neighborhood, and this is how I feed, clothe, and shelter my family. I'd like you to take that into consideration when you vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Don't think we have anybody else? Thanks. Hensley?
I would like to go ahead and make the recommendation that we move this item, and just to go back and bring together all of the levels of support you have for running that type of business, I think is absolutely excellent. To not have any issues with the police departments because of all of the potential issues you could have there, to me, really underscores the fact that you and your wife are in the business, you're running it, you're making sure that everything is going along the way that it should, and to have the level of petitions and support. And to be perfectly honest, I can't tell you how many calls and emails I've gotten from people in the last few days, just wanting to make sure that we understood your story and were supportive of it. And I think, you know, obviously, to be real honest, my personal bias is, I'd rather see a different type of business, but I am also sensitive to the fact that you've got a longstanding business that you've made successful there, and it's because of what you've done that it is successful. So I'm happy to make the recommendation to support it.
So you're gonna move item 43?
I'm gonna move 43A, and I'll go ahead and move B. I don't know if we'll get B passed or not.
I support both, and also compliment you on the business you run, and like Christine said, there's a lot of other businesses that could contribute to the neighborhood as well. But you operate legally, and you do a fair job and are responsible with the products that you sell, and those are the kind of vendors we need, even if we don't...
I would not sign this petition otherwise. He's a good business owner.
Yeah.
He's been doing business almost about as long as I have, so, I mean, on the South Side, so he does a good job.
Get involved with the Southwest 9th.
And you talked him into petitioning himself to vote for it, so that's good.
Yeah, get involved with the Southwest 9th revitalization. We need all the help we can get.
Yep.
I'm gonna vote for it, but it should have never been approved in the first place, with the location next to the school net where he's at. But I think he's got a good business going, so I will support it knowingly, that it really is not according to our rules and regulations.
Agreed, understand.
Seven, yes?
Can I ask a quick question, Mayor? He did give me these petitions. Should we move to receive and file them? They went to the P&amp;Z.
Yep.
Okay, I'll move to receive and file the petitions that impacted our vote.
Seven, yes?
Laura, here they are.
Mr. Coleman voted for it, too.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Item 44, a request from Eric Peterson, owner, doing business as a Dad LLC, for an amendment to the Sawyer's Landing PUD conceptual plan on 4820 Sawyer's Drive to allow accessory use of a single-family dwelling property for a home occupation business consisting of bicycle rental. Is Eric here? He's here?
No, I don't know.
Okay. All right, anybody from the audience want to speak to this item?
I will, I did talk to the neighborhood group, and they're pretty supportive of it. The only concern they had was if there is too much on-street parking, and I'd hope to have a question answered by that, but since they're not here, I can, I feel confident that they'll be able to do a job, and if it has to come to enforcement, then we'll have to follow up from them. But we don't think there's gonna be that much heavy traffic in that area, so I'm gonna move 44.
I understand he has a limited number of bikes that he's playing on.
Yeah, four is, I think, yeah. So that shouldn't bring too much traffic, yeah.
Well, I'm just worried about the bicycle built for two, you know, there'd be four cars, it'd be eight.
How about the bicycle built for three?
Thanks, Bob.
Seven, yes?
Okay, Eric, wherever you are, you're in business. 45, on continuation of public hearing approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and to receive and file bids, council communication number 14-190. Is there anybody here to speak on the ADA sidewalk ramp program?
Six, yes?
On 46, 2014 ADA sidewalk ramp program, contract one, resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and receive and file bids, council communication number 14-190. Is there anybody here to speak on the ADA sidewalk ramp program? If there are none, could we have a motion?
Mayor, there's the speaker.
Oh.
Well, I'm probably an elitist, but in my own neighborhood, there are places where there's no ramp off the sidewalk. And there's holes and, you know, you go down Hubble and you look at the sidewalk and you try to get there with a wheelchair to the city swimming pool. And I'm sure that if it were a sidewalk south of Grand, it would be a lot better shape than what that is.
Okay. Could we have engineering or come up and speak to this where we are in the program? Because we're moving to try to get compliance around the city. So I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
While Jeb's coming up, if you look at the list of sidewalks and the repairs they're gonna have, we got a whole bunch of them on the east side this year that's gonna be addressed.
You go over to the feeding seat, there's no ramp. The feeding seat and the Taco John's, there's no ramp to let you off of there. You have to go into their driveway, fight the gravel, then get off and hope that no one tries to kill you. Because people on Hubble don't.
So is Hubble the area that you're thinking about?
Oh, yeah. Hubble's really bad.
Do you have any update on Hubble, where we are?
Mayor members, Councilman Jeb Brewer, can't give you specifics on that ramp. Essentially, we have a number of ramp programs that we do each year. We spend, you know, over a million dollars every year on ramps. The ramps program we have has been set in place by two documents. One is a transition plan, and one is a plan developed by Project Civic Access that prioritized the ramps. So eventually, we should be getting every place, if there is a particular ramp that you have a concern, we have to meld that in there with our current program, but...
If you could kind of get from her an idea where that one is, and then maybe you could follow up with her and let her know kind of where that is in the process, because it sounds like she has a concern, and legitimate one regarding access and safety.
Well, another place that's really bad is if you go across the street before you hit the, the Latin King. They basically try to kill you off. And you, when I used to ride the bus, I never got off on that side because there's no sidewalks over there. So you get off, cross the street, and then come across Hubble. And then when you get to the Latin King, somebody parks on the sidewalk. I mean, literally, cars park on the sidewalks. Ask Mr. Manetti, he drives past there every day when he worked for the Anderson Erickson.
Okay. Yeah. All right. We'll get enforcement out there. Where's Chief?
Jeb, will you include me in on the update you gave her, too?
I'll go ahead and move item 46.
Six, yes, one, no.
All right. That completes the hearings at 5:45. Takes us back now to item 38 from James Andrew of 1407 Linden Lane. He says to speak regarding various issues.
Mayor County, Councilman, citizens of Des Moines.
Excuse me? Welcome back.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. What I, I guess that I should pass this on, if we could have those items for the council and to be received and filed. The, the city, and I've heard just recently, understand the need to increase revenue. And of course, the city's always looking for ways to raise revenue. And one of the ways that it used to be made available was property taxes, of course. And it's not a thing that people want to do, want to increase property taxes. But what I'm suggesting, recommending, proposing, that we increase property taxes, starting with individuals having homes valued at $50,000. Their increase would be 45,000ths per cent, which would cost about $22.50. Up to, and I identified an estimate of $10 million, $20 million, $30 million property value at 2,000ths per cent.
James, can I make a suggestion? I think that these ideas may have some merit. Unfortunately, I think the Iowa Legislature has to change the law to allow this to, to happen. And the city in and of itself can't do something that treats one property valuation different than another, nor a millage rate. So the legislature probably is the best place to do this. We'll receive it and file it, and I'll have the city attorney look into it. But I'm thinking he's gonna probably say, "I'm close to right."
I think you're right, yes, sir. So the city has no power to raise taxes in the city of Des Moines?
Okay, we can, we can raise the millage rate, but we can't do it in the fashion that you've suggested, which is, you know...
Oh, not a progressive rate, not a millage rate. So let's look at a millage rate thing. If you're looking at a flat fare across the board, property tax increase, then that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
I'll amend my recommendation.
Sure, no, I didn't...
Thank you for pointing out that, because I'm not that legally minded. Secondly, tax abatements, if there's a way that we could eliminate tax abatements. There was a great advertisement on the city programming where a gentleman's saying, you know, "Hey, you can buy these homes and be, pay no taxes for 10 years." And of course, that's a great incentive for people to move into those properties. And of course, it helps business entrepreneurs, folks that can afford to build the properties and make them available, then to benefit. Because those folks aren't paying taxes, of course, they're gonna be willing to pay more money for those properties, and so on. So it's washing one hand and the other. Reducing city electric costs with renewable energy. The printout that I got from the pounding department, city pounding department, identifies electric cost up to April 30th was $4,463,259.71. The annual estimate's gonna be closer to $6 million for electrical expenses. If we can raise the revenue to install solar panels, wind devices, and so on, you're going to, at some point, if we could look at the larger spenders of electricity, the city lights, municipal buildings, operations, there's maintenance up into the million plus. If you could eliminate that million plus over the next 35 years, we're looking at 30, 35 million dollars you're saving, which could be, of course, used in other ways, street maintenance, and so on. So I really hope that the city council will make an effort to consider, one, raising, I forget what you call that, Mayor, the, what kind of taxes that?
The levy rate.
The levy rate.
No, that tax, to raise it, so that we, we have the revenue to take care of the city
appropriately for everyone across the city, not portions that get kind of left alone because there's not quite as much development.
We just passed our budget, as I think we mentioned to you last time, on March 15th.
Exactly, yeah.
So that budget is for the 1415 year, and we also did a 24-month budget. So we're tentatively locked in through the 1516 cycle. So we can look at, at all kinds of opportunities and options, and we're certainly gonna take these into consideration, because we'd really like to reduce costs. And I think, not only would the city like to do it, I think all of our residents would do, so...
Of course. And then the money, the value of the tax dollar is going to go much further.
Yeah.
Because we're not going to continue to pay for something... Of course, men in America loves getting those $6 million.
Absolutely.
But taxpayers, of course, wouldn't want that. And lastly, Mayor, I'd like to apologize to you for offending you at the last council meeting. That wasn't my intent.
Understand.
I just like to try to get support that I...
No problem.
And any council members that I offended as well had no intent to do that.
No, it's just, it's a matter of how government operates and separates itself from other interests.
Sure. I just didn't realize that that was something that was not appropriate or procedural.
Would you like us to receive and file this?
I absolutely would, sir.
All right.
And to have it reconsidered in 20...
Please say aye.
Aye.
2015, 2016?
Yep.
When that's available. Thank you very much.
That'll work.
Thank you, James.
And we are putting LED lights up in the streetscape in Beverdale, by the way.
In your neighborhood.
Cutting those costs, yeah.
All right. Item 39 has been withdrawn. Item 40 is from Leah Swallow of 2002 Lion Street to speak regarding trains in Des Moines. Leah, if you want, you've got a microphone in your hand, you can speak from wherever you want.
Lovely. I'm Leah Swallow, and I'm from the 4th ward, and I'm practicing the Mohammed. If he won't, if my city council person won't call me, I'm gonna come see you all.
Excuse me, I've, I've returned your calls. You never return mine.
Well, I've tried.
Go on.
Anyway, we seem to be having a problem on the east side, and that is the trains. That 10-minute rule is a joke. I've called many, many times when the trains spent on the tracks for an hour and 42 minutes, and the city dispatcher, a female on the 311 shift, says, "That's not Des Moines' problem, Des Moines Police's problem." I asked him if it was a problem when they drug a body down the railroad tracks. That was four days before the most recent gentleman died on them. It seems to also stop our police department from showing up. I've called them for all the neighbors, you know, setting off the fireworks. And I'm sure the chief back there can tell you that I got her at a neighborhood meeting. We've called her about, oh, you know, people parking on the ramps at the Suzie's Laundromat. I sat there one day with my clothes folded for two hours, waiting for a police officer to show up. But, you know, we call about ATVs, and the man who ran around our neighborhood for 18 months, now he's dead. And we've called about a mountain bike that has no license plates and no lights, but five, six hours later, nobody shows up. Now, if I was south of Grand, or if I was the governor's mansion and this happened, you guys would be getting severe phone calls. There is a 10-minute rule that doesn't apply. And if you guys want to make some money on all the makeup taxes that you do for us so graciously, why don't you find the railroad for every car, every minute they go past the 10-minute rule? You know, if, you know, another thing that we won't deal with here in Des Moines is the 40% that is not-for-profit, who get city services, who get fire, police, rescue, and get their roads plowed. If you can get our legislators to make the franchise fee a legal tax, then start to get, to get people to pay in lieu of taxes, Mercy and Methodist and Broadlawn's, and all those are not-for-profit. Now, don't get me wrong, I could maybe understand the VA, and maybe I could understand Broadlawn's, but I don't know now, since they don't take Medicare. And we have the Jehovah's Witnesses that have not-for-profit, but I've never seen any food go to the food pantry from them. So if we want to do something, you know, let's start taxing the Pacific Union who holds up our tracks for two hours. One time, I saw the Rosie Mobile, the library mobile, jump the tracks as the train was coming and go across it with the gates down. Now, like I said, we call, nobody shows up. So evidently, the train is, it's stopping our ability to get good police service. And that 10-minute rule is a joke. So the city engineer says it's the 10-minute rule, but, oh, well, then there's the, we're checking the air brakes. Two, if a train has 300, three cars on it, three engines on it, it's not gonna be no 10 minutes. So, you know what? I'm tired of waiting for police service to show up. And if it's impacting us that bad, you know what? Why don't you put a fee, fine, and tax on the Pacific Union? They took out the second track, there's only one track there. It hits us at Hubble, Easton, Hull, or, I'm trying to think of the important person, Hull, then we have Des Moines, then we have Grand, and then we have two more stops, because I live right across the street from the railroad tracks, I assure you. And I mean, right across the street. You cross my street, 20th Court, and you walk onto the property, that it's a great big brick building there, and on the other side is the railroad tracks. So if you guys want to make a fee, a fine, or a tax, and we got 16 mil already on our taxes now, you know Altoona's is nine? I don't complain about my taxes, and I won't, because I want the police to show up. My husband was on the roof when our neighbor set off the fireworks on our roof, and it was on fire. But nobody shows up because we're always a low priority. And if the trains are causing that problem, then you know what? We need to take it in hand.
Leah, thank you very much. Any questions anybody has, or I think we should receive and file, Mr. Moore?
Leah, the police department's absolutely right. There's a state law that says the rail lines cannot block an intersection for more than 20 minutes. But it's superseded by the federal law, and the federal law says they can block them as long as they want.
You know what we...
So there's, no. There's nothing the police department can do about it. And it goes back to what the mayor was talking about earlier, about something else. In order for us to tax the Union Pacific, you'd have to have the federal law changed for us to be able to do that.
Then what can't we do with the, what can't we do with the 40% of the city of Des Moines that's not-for-profit? Can we put them all on one ward and stop their fire service, their police service, and their, stop removing their snow?
We need legislative action to be able to do that.
And that's true. But you were able to make the franchise fee...
I think we're moving great.
...legislation? And you know what? We can do something to get people to pay something in lieu of taxes.
You know, I, I agree with you 100%, and that is something that, obviously, in the short time that I've sat here, that I've come to realize, I mean, we obviously need more police, definitely more fire. You know, obviously, we have medics that aren't in service that would help our system out. And, and I realize what you're saying, and there needs to be some changes. I'll agree with you there.
More law building here. They took $24 million of taxpayers' money, put up red velvet curtains and more marble. But we don't get one dime, nickel, or dollar worth of tax from them. If you can take $24 million of the taxpayers' money, you can get them to pay something.
Well, you're, I mean, the 40% that, that doesn't pay, I mean, that, I, I agree. I'm hoping that at some point in time, we can have a pilot, you know, payment in lieu of taxes that'll go out to everyone. I mean, that would, that would help. You know, we, we need to find a source of revenue, and I don't think that that's raising property taxes. And, you know, there's, you have some legitimate issues that, I mean, that, that need to be addressed, and, you know, it's, it's something that we're working on as a council, and I'm...
And I think it's important just to make sure that we have correct information out there, but the World Food Prize was paid with private donations. They, they raised that money, it was not taxpayer money.
I thought that they got several million dollars from the federal... I thought that they got several million dollars from the federal government.
Yeah, they did.
They did get some of that, but the majority of it was private fundraising.
Still pay no taxes for it.
That's true.
Forty, forty, or 24 million dollars spent on a building and burnout. I pay my taxes. You guys gave a chunk of change in principle and I pay theirs. And I live in one of those 50 less thousand dollar houses on the east side.
Well, one thing I'd like to add to this, and I understand what you're saying about the World Food Prize, the question I would ask back to you, do you know who owns that building? The city?
Well, then you know what? There's a reason why people, when they pay their taxes faithfully, get teed off.
Well, the city's not paying any expenses on that building where we used to pay them all. It has been totally refurbished and, and much to the benefit of many, many of our citizens. And I'm sure that if you want, you could get access to it and we'll get you in there. They've done a beautiful, beautiful job of refurbishing a, over a 100-year-old building that really is, again, one of those landmarks, if you will, that the, that the city of Des Moines and many of our residents are really thankful that it's still here and is, is being used and not costing the taxpayers the money that it did before to maintain it and keep up.
What 42 million dollar, or what 24 million dollars would have done in a food pantry system here?
No, that, that, you're absolutely right there. $24 million would go a long ways and, you know, I look at, at CDBG funds that we get every single year that used to be towards $10 million. It's now down to 3.7 and probably going to go lower.
We don't want to move like we...
So it's, it's, it's unfortunate. Any final comments from anybody?
I was going to move to receive and file our comments and include them in the record.
I'd like to add that the international attention it brings to our city, the World Food Prize, you know, and all the...
Astronomical.
Yeah, it is. It really adds to the...
The hotel rooms and the restaurant visits pay a lot, you know, those entities pay a lot of taxes on the back end.
But Mercy pays a percentage of the loop in taxes. And I don't think none of us does.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
And, and, and all of our churches, you know, some churches do nothing for the betterment of their communities. They don't collect anything for the food pantry. They don't do anything else.
Thank you very much. And we're going to move on now to our next item. It's item 47, which is a review of the zoning board of adjustment decision granting a use variance to allow 1617 Oakland Avenue to be used as a boarding house. Choose one alternative, A, B, or C. Any comments anybody has on this particular item? All right. Do we have a recommendation? Bill?
Yes. I, um, I sat on the board of adjustment when, when they came through the first time and we voted it down. I haven't seen anything yet that, that gives me any indication that anything is improved by this. I would like to see us take recommendation A and remand this back to the board of adjustment and have them take a look at that. And I think any, any information that, that we've been able to get since that judgment was made, any new information should be made available to the board so they can make a good, solid decision because I've talked with the, the neighbors, I have talked with the neighborhood group. The Riverbend people are pretty energetic and they, they want to make sure that when we put this thing to R160, that's what it needs to be. There's a lot of things that are going on good there. More can happen, but nine, in my view, a nine-person boarding house is not the way to get things done in that area. So we can't do anything about that except remand it back to the board of adjustment and I hope we can get all the information that we need. I know this is what the neighbors would want, so that's why I'm moving 47A.
Seven, yes?
All right. The item, we'll go back for further discussion at the board of adjustment. Takes us to item 48, which is a resolution of support endorsing the Capitol Crossroads Capital Core Neighborhood Improvement Implementation Plan, Council Communication Number 14 Dash 212. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Marty.
Go ahead, sir.
Anybody else? Besides this citizen that's going to come speak here?
Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur, also speaking behalf of Des Moines neighbors tonight. I had the opportunity, the privilege actually, of serving on the committee that studied this for quite a long time. It was a, a meeting that, a series of meetings that were excellent. They were sometimes confrontational as to directions that should go, but ultimately, I believe that the group came to a very good plan for the future of Des Moines and particularly for neighborhood revitalization. The, the presentation was made to Des Moines neighbors. They endorsed the plan in this general concept. There were a couple of questions that they had that I'd need to bring to you in regard to how this goes forward. Number one, one of the concerns that you have anytime with the neighborhood movement is investment in time and energy and in making decisions. And as this goes forward, they're very concerned that the neighborhood movement, the neighborhoods in our city of Des Moines will continue to be in the, in a partnership with making decisions as it goes forward. In the area of setting up priorities and the area of making sure that when possible, improvements can be done on a fair and equitable basis. We know that's not always possible. There's some projects that, that have to go and go and get done. But as you look at in a general rule, that the neighborhoods know what's going on, see timetables when possible and are at the table helping to make decisions in regard to very specific projects that they see in the neighborhood. One of the concerns that was shared earlier today by Skip at the workshops was the fact that in the initial conception, there were not very many neighborhood leaders as part of that huge 35, 45-member panel that got discussed. There's a concern that if that continues and they're not at the table, they perceive that there will be a forced down, forced feeding of a plan to them with not the ability for them to weigh in on what's happening in their very own neighborhoods. And so with that particular caveat going forward, Des Moines neighbors would like to express their support and excitement of this Capitol Crossroads plan as it goes forward.
Marty, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Glenn Lyons. I live at 3316 Southern Hills Drive and I'm the CEO of the Downtown Community Alliance. We hosted many of the meetings of the groups that put this plan together and I attended a number of them as well. And I must tell you that I was impressed very much with the dedication of the staff, community members and some of the representatives of the nonprofit associations that worked on this. There was a real effort to try to find some new ideas, some value add to work to improve our neighborhoods. You know, we have a, quite an investment run going in on downtown right now and we should all be thankful for that. We need to find a way to put together the tools to facilitate that kind of investment run in our neighborhoods. They need help. We've done a lot of work over the years, planning department and the community people, but we need some new, new ways to move the bar, if you like. This neighborhood improvement plan helps us move in the right direction. We'll have to work pretty hard to find a way to finance some of the ideas in there because they are bold, but I'd rather try to support up some bold ideas as opposed to carrying on with business as usual. And I just wanted to thank everybody involved in this and, and hope to help in, in the efforts to find new ways to work in our neighborhoods.
Thanks, Glenn.
Excellent.
All right. Christine?
As everybody knows, both Skip and I served on that committee and I'm pleased, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we endorse the Capitol Crossroads Capital Core Neighborhood Plan. And the presentation that we had this morning talked about some of the additional items, prioritizing and what their recommendations were for the next committee has been referenced here, which will really focus on fundraising and how do we actually fund the plan and keep it moving forward. So I'd just like to volunteer to continue serving on that committee in a, that will be focused on fundraising. I think the slide came up and said one, but it was also discussed that there could be, there would be two from the city council. So just to make you aware of that as we make the motion on this.
Skip?
I'd like to point out that it's been told to us that even though we keep getting these five, they're not priorities, but they're always in the same order, that they're not really prioritized. And that our citizen satisfaction survey identified infrastructure is what's important to the residents of Des Moines. But I think in the long run, this is a very good plan. This is something that's been needed for a long time and I'm going to support it for that reason as long as we keep in mind that these are not in a prioritized order. And I'd like to say thanks to Russ Cross again. I don't know how you can keep smiling after what we put you through. You know, Marty, Marty was right. It was very contentious at times and I thought, well, that's the end of Russ. He won't be back, but he always came back smiling.
Thank you. Thank Marty.
Seven, yes?
Right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We said adjourn. Thank you all for attending.[1771.88][1771.88][music]